I call this the June 16th, 2020 Legislative Body of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to Order. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Jason Nix. He is a member of the Holiness Church of God. Our pledge allegiance will be given by Shaylan Brooke Height. She is the Lincoln County Youth Winner for 2020 at the Governor's Volunteer Star Award Winner. She's a 10th grader at Lincoln County High School, president of Leo Club, member of HOSA Club, volunteer at the local nursing home and Lincoln Health System and Crossroad Pregnancy Center and multiple other ways throughout our community. She's a member of the Federal First Baptist Church, serves on mission teams two years in the past that went to Belize. Will be going to Guatemala this summer. She runs cross-country at Lincoln County High School, enjoys playing tennis, and she's the daughter of Robbie and Kim Hunt. Would you please stand at this time for our invocation and pledge?
Pledge of Allegiance. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for the beautiful day you've given us. Thank you for the blessing each and every day that you give us. We ask a special blessing in this meeting and its commissioners and all the Lincoln officials that are here and doing their part to better Lincoln County in a positive way. We ask your blessing on their families and everyone that's in attendance since they make their way back home tonight, please make their travels safe as be your will. We ask your blessings on this community and this country as we're going through a difficult time and we need your blessings more than ever. We ask all this in your son's most precious name again.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all. At this time, if you would electronically answer the roll call. They're not gonna be able to see, right? She'll call you out if it doesn't show up, so please answer, and if it doesn't show up, she'll let you know.
I'm gonna... Miss Kate, you in?
Here.
Do you have your... And Miss Shirley?
Yeah.
Doug yours is saying confirming, and Don yours is saying confirming.
Well, I'm here.
And Miss Shirley's went. Doug yours is still saying confirming, and Don yours is too. Yours went. Doug yours went.
It's not moving.
Can you try it one more time, please? Let me see if I can overwrite it. Did you confirm one more time for this? Everybody else is good except for...
You want me to confirm?
Okay.
He just needed a little more guidance.
I have 22 commissioners present.
Okay.
Two absent.
One absent and one...
One absent.
Okay. 22 present, one absent. Attorney Sims, 12 will be a majority in this meeting until we replace Commissioner Walther's seat. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. No announcements at this time. I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes, and let me... One thing that is already corrected, we just didn't get it out on there, where it says the number present, it should be 21 rather than 20, and we're also adding zeros after those where it's no or no response when there was only, when there was no votes. So I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes, please.
Right.
Commissioner Guntan Berman makes a motion. Commissioner Bradford seconded it. Any questions or comments on last month's meeting minutes? Not all, those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. In this, we've not been making motions for a while that you have received and acknowledged receipt of the monthly and the quarterly minutes, but we're requesting that we do that as a motion that you've received those to kind of clean up some of the things we need to make sure that we're doing right. So would entertain a motion acknowledging that you've got six monthly committee meeting minutes and seven quarterly ones.
Move somewhere.
Commissioner Oblin makes a motion. Commissioner Young seconded it. Any discussion or questions on this? All those in favor that acknowledging that they received those, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you. Our next one, consideration for approval of resolution honoring the memory of the late Darren Hayes Walker, former member of this body, the Lincoln County Legislative Body. Mr. Sims?
Thank you, Mayor Oblin. This resolution is entitled, "Resurrection Honoring the Memory of the Late Darren Hayes Walker, Former Member of Lincoln County Legislative Body." Whereas on May 7, 23, the leading friends and associates of Darren Hayes Walker were saddened to hear of his death at the age of 57. Whereas Darren Hayes Walker was born on November 7, 1968, the son of Nancy Wells and the late Darren Walker. Whereas Mr. Walker was a lifelong wrestler in Lincoln County. Whereas Mr. Walker was married to Stacy Quig Walker and had four children, Sarah Walker Tunnell, Jared Walker, and Marty Walker County. Whereas Mr. Walker was the owner and operator of Walker's Lobby in Taft and Say and had a passion for being in the weeds, loved all things housework, and wanted to run it. Whereas Mr. Walker was a member of the Purkhun Baptist Church. Whereas Mr. Walker served a distinction in the Lincoln County Legislative Body. Whereas Mr. Walker was survived by his line of grandchildren, Bob Campbell, the Henry Tunnell brothers, Danny Walker, step-sisters, Barbara Brackler, and Judy Norris, and a host of nieces, nephews, and friends. Now therefore, it is resolved that the members of the Lincoln County Legislative Body, with our wish and desire to express to the family of Mr. Walker our sincere condolences and sympathy, and to express to the members of us as leading friends and associates our sincere appreciation for the many years of devoted and senior service rendered in Lincoln County and this community and by our resolve. It is resolved that this resolution respect these same and spread upon minutes of the Lincoln County Legislative Body, that a copy thereof be forwarded to his mother, wife, and children. This 16th of June, 2020, signed by Mr. Martin and Mr. Joseph.
What's the will of the commission? Commissioner Graham makes a motion. Commissioner Mitchell seconded it. All those in favor of approval of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Stacy, Sarah, Jacob, Marley, and Nancy, if y'all would stand, please, while Mr. Sims makes the presentation. Next item, consideration for approval of resolution honoring the memory of the late Charles Marty.
Whereas on the reason before, we're claiming our team, the leading friends and associates of Charles Marty, were saddened to learn of his death at the age of 77. Whereas Mr. Marty was born on January the 19th, 1942, in Lincoln County, Tennessee, to R.C. Martin and Irene Smith Martin. Whereas Mr. Marty graduated from Flintville Hospital in 1960 and attended the Tennessee State Virtual University of Cleveland, Tennessee. Whereas Mr. Marty started working for the railroad in Nashville, worked reading for the Federal Bureau of Investigation in Washington, Tennessee, as a courier, farm in Lincoln County from 1965 until 1993. Was in sales of farm equipment, mobile homes, and office supplies from 1994 until 1999. Worked at the Tennessee Corruption Facility in Telomah from 1999 until 2004, and obtained a real estate license in 2002. Whereas Mr. Marty was a volunteer fireman at the Flintville Fire Station. Whereas Mr. Marty served in the National Guard from 1964 until 1970. Whereas Mr. Marty was a faithful member of the New Hope Baptist Church. Whereas Mr. Marty was a county commissioner for eight years, from 1978 to 1982, to 1994 until 1998. Whereas Mr. Marty was married to Patricia "Evelyn" Marty of Flintville. He had one daughter, Jana Marty James, of Chattanooga, Tennessee. One son, Tony Earl Marty of Madison, Alabama. One stepson, Marty "Pete" O'Neil. One sister, Teresa Marty Piltz. One brother, Marty "Buckle" Marty. One granddaughter, Cecilia Marty James. Four step-grandchildren, Bobby, Tiffany, O'Neil, Jalen, Brackler, Wesley, Chase, O'Neil, and Dawn Brackler. Now therefore, it is resolved, the members of Lincoln County Commission, with our wish and desire to express to the family of Mr. Marty our sincere condolences and sympathy, and to express to the members of us as leading friends and associates our sincere appreciation for the many years of devoted and senior service rendered in Lincoln County and this community and by Mr. Marty. It is resolved with this resolution respect and spread upon minutes of the commission. You got a copy thereof be forwarded to your chair.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Mitchell makes a motion. Commissioner Douglas seconded it. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Pat, Jana, and Tony Earl, if y'all please stand for the presentation. Next item, our school building update, Dr. Bill Heath.
Good morning. How's it going? Our school building plans and where we are on that, and a few other things just to mention here while I'm here tonight. First of all, at Blatch, it's moving at warp speed. There's things rocking and rolling there, and I know we plan to open August of 2021, but sometime near this next year, I know we'll get an occupancy license, whatever that calls, and be able to start moving in during the year, it looks like. But our plans are still open for the next school year, 2021, 2022 school year at Blatch, new school. So everything's moving there. Yeah, I'm in down that way. That building is up, and it jumps out as you come from the highway, so take a drive down and see it sometime. We are, I know, we are giving the school board a tour here in Wilson, and we talked about inviting you guys down for a tour when that time's appropriate. It'd be a pretty open tour, so it'd be sometime that you guys who just don't know when yet, but you look at the invitation, we'll post it now. The tour facility, as it's nearing the end or completion of the building. At the high school, the new wing at the high school, I know if you recall back several months ago, I reported to you that it was a big high schedule. One thing that us being virtual most of the spring has done is to allow that group and the folks working there to speed up and to go ahead and start some things that they were not able to wait until school was out to start. So I'm not gonna say it's moved at warp speed like Blatch has, but it is getting closer to back home target, and our initial target was to try to start the school year this coming year with all things completed. It was gonna be a tight schedule to begin with, and for a while, we were looking at, man, it may be fall break before that happens, but now it's getting back closer to being ready for school starts. And that's the new wing with all the science labs and the new things, as well as the renovation of the Lincoln County High School. The math and science pod is being renovated. It'll be the new home of our RCT program and some other things back there. And that renovation is what we were able to start early because of, you know, because of using virtual the last couple of months of school year. So that's an update of where we are on the building projects. Just a couple of COVID-19 updates as far as school system goes. This summer, a couple of things. One is activities and athletics. We developed a phase-in approach for our activities and athletics. The high school started a couple of weeks before the middle schools as far as the phase in yet, and there's a lot of guidelines in place, and we've done that today, I suppose, or I did, in regards to where we are on that plan and where we're gonna go next. So our kids are starting to get back active and get back together with a lot of precautions and starting those activities and those athletic activities. The other thing this summer is we did continue the feeding of our students. We feed once a week. We serve them 14 meals when they come in, so they get breakfast and lunch for seven days to take with them. We're averaging somewhere between 350 and 400 students participating each week, so there's a lot of meals every week when you look at it. And our breakeven, financial standpoint, our breakeven number was about 200 as an average. So I'm glad to say that we're able to continue that at least through the month of June. We're gonna evaluate every week and make sure that we're still financially cost-efficient and able to provide that, and so far, everything's been great with that number, so I'm happy to say that. Question I get asked all the time is about the opening of school. I had a couple of upset parents and grandparents today because they wanna know answers, and all I can tell them is I wanna know answers too. I really do. But right now, I report to you, there's three options. One is a back to school as normal as possible with whatever precautions that we can put into place and safety procedures that we can put into place, whatever those might be. We're learning about those every day. Through the CDC, through the State Department, the State Health, everybody, you know, everybody is giving us guidance on those things, but nobody's making decisions. The decision is left to the locals, to us, but everybody has the guidance. So we're using all different guides that we're getting and trying to come up with decisions. So option number one is as normal as possible with cautionary message. Another option, which is not no pick to order on these two, another option is full virtual. Full virtual would be no kids in our building for any reason. And we don't wanna go that route. That would be our, that would be an option that we're really... I would say that's our least favorable option, but it's one that we have to prepare for. You know, we never experienced anything like we did this spring with having to go virtual. And, you know, I want our parents and our kids and grandparents and everybody to know, you know, this next school year, if we have to go virtual, either at the beginning of the year, mid-semester, spring, whatever, it won't be anything like the virtual that we had in the spring. You know, that was while we were caught off guard, every school system was. It was almost test time. We did a lot of review stuff, sent some things home. We're planning that if we go virtual or have to go virtual, it is new learning, full screen ahead. And, you know, our test scores have been top of thousands of the last, well, the other five years, it's all five years of the last year, the ones we had tests. And there's a couple of years where no tests, nobody had tests, so... And so, you know, we always ask our kids and families to maintain that status, so it will be full screen ahead with new learning, and it'll be a lot different. Our teachers will be making constant contact with our families at home and different things that we didn't necessarily do in the spring. So that's the second option, and it's probably our least favorable, that's the full virtual option. The other option, the third option, which is probably more than we'll end up using some form or capacity, we call it a hybrid option. We don't know details of that right now. The hybrid means it's gonna be some virtual, some in, you know, in person. We sent out a survey to all our families over the last couple of weeks, a little short five, I think four, five question survey, and a full 31% of our respondents said, given the current conditions, I would be reluctant to send my kid back to school if not. You know, but it is the beginning of school. We'll hit that in face of direct struggle. So that's concerning. We're gonna have a follow-up survey sometime in July as we begin to iron out some details and know where we are in the status of COVID-19. So, but we're using that survey to tell us, hey, we better prepare for some kind of a hybrid situation, and if you look anything like, it could be half the students one week, half the students the next week. Because I don't want y'all seeing any of the guidance, but we're giving guidance from the State Department on all areas of operations, and yesterday, they released the transportation guidance. You know, if we follow that guidance to the team, we'd have to hire about 50 additional people because the guidance said we have two people on every bus to make sure to get it following all the guidelines, and then one child per seat, and all these things that will make us have to either, you know, run more routes, hire more drivers, which we have a hard time finding drivers now, and hire people to also be on the bus. So, you know, I just, I just say that to say, if we went half our students at a time, that would cut down on some of those numbers on the bus, some of those numbers in the cafeteria at one time, all those things. Another hybrid option that we're talking about is, you know, if that 30% of our parents, 31% of our parents are still serious about not wanting to send their kids back in August, we might look at a situation where send your kid or not, it's your choice. If you choose not to send your kid, we would have our teachers teaching virtual, or we'd have your child in the old and our virtual school. And if you go, no, we'll send your kid, then we won't your kid to school, but we can't have you going back and forth, you know, unless there's some mandate somewhere. We can't, we couldn't manage that. So I hope you see that we are working hard on the plans. We don't have the details ironed out because, to be honest with you, we plan something today and tomorrow for the rural changes, you know, summer changes. So it's a very difficult situation for us to plan. And as educators, we're in a planning world, that's what we do. We own our own standard things. And so, anyway, I wanted to give you an idea of the past three options we're looking at and sort of where we are. It's a very foggy picture right now, but we'll have to clear that up in the next 30 days, you know, by mid-July, we'll have something cleared up on that. Other things, just the last thing, graduation. I'd like to announce that we will have our first graduation at Lincoln Central Academy, which is at the old MGA building, building out there. We'll have our virtual school there, which is, next year, it actually will be grades four through 12. This year, it was mainly grades nine through 12. We have our first graduate, and we'll have a small ceremony, small within just one graduate this year, but that's okay, that's our first. And then Friday night, and that's Friday at 5:30, and then Friday night, Lincoln County High School graduations at the stadium. Students will be given a specific number of tickets, and you'll only be able to get into the stadium with a ticket. We'll have stadium hushers to, you know, sort of, not necessarily escort you directly to a seat, but to point you in a direction where everybody's social distancing. The kids will be social distancing on the field, so there's a lot of planning with the administration at the high school going into that, a lot of work. They're out on field today on Stadium, Marcus Stadium, and tomorrow, they're gonna be setting up, and so a lot of work's going to make that happen. And I feel really bad for the past 2020, you know, they gone through the spring when all those, all the activities that we all remember from our senior year are, you know, that are ingrained in our minds, they have a different memory, and they always will have a different memory. But, you know, the one thing I'm concerned about is I'm concerned about the past 2021. I mean, realistically, it's a situation that everybody in this nation would be getting there in front of their head, they're gonna go out. So, but we aren't gonna be able to put a good closure with graduation on Friday night for our senior Lincoln County High School. And if you know a graduate and don't get a ticket to attend, we all know the live stream, so if you're able to watch, you know, have a recording, you can get to that front of our bus line, so I'd be happy to join there. So that's it. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to draw that issue.
Any questions for Dr. Heath?
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is introduction of Darrell Blaylock, our new CEO at Lincoln Health Systems. Russ was going to introduce you, but I don't see him, Darrell, so I think it's a self-introduction tonight.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Russ walked in here to speak, but Russ thought that his 42nd wedding anniversary is a little bit more important. He comes here, he wants to celebrate his 43rd birthday, so he appreciated the invitation, but he's celebrating his anniversary this month, so appreciate the opportunity to come. Mayor Edmond, commissioners, thank you for inviting me and having me here today. Just wanted to make a brief introduction. I appreciate the Lincoln Health System, where it is, which is a member of the members of this commission, selecting me as the administrator of Lincoln Health System. I am visiting here from Martin, Tennessee, which is over Wilted County, more west part of the state. Been over in Wilted, Tennessee for about 12 years, in a hospital about the same size as the Lincoln Health Center. Didn't have all the services that Lincoln Health System has, but have had about 30 years of hospital administration experience throughout the United States, and looking forward to living here. I am married, I have four children, two of those children will be moving, will be my wives here to Lincoln County. My other two daughters, I have one of those in Madison, Alabama, and then one that was in Parkdale, and they have, between the four children, we have five grandchildren, four of them are in Alabama, and so, you know, when Russ called me, I knew Russ from a previous life, and when Russ called me, I got the opportunity to hear, you know, I had a great job in Houston, Tennessee, but the more that I'm given opportunity to hear and talk to Russ and the groundwork that Russ has laid out over the last year that must have been here, there's a lot of opportunity. And, you know, come on the path with the four children, they found out that I was looking in this area, you know, your kids and your grandkids, they kind of pull at you, and you wanna try to get your family close together. So that's another reason that we decided to come here. In the process of, I'm gonna stop here, I'll say the arrangement about it, and you can just have it, in the process of buying a house here in Lincoln County, and I was supposed to close yesterday on my house, but there was a pickup in Martin, not my house, but the person that was by my house, so it's like third party down. Kind of domino effect, and so when I called my wife last Wednesday to tell her that maybe I had a little pickup, the Atlas van lights just pulled up to the house, and I'm glad I was here in Fayetteville, not in Martin, because she was like, what do you do? I said, we love truck, and God will take care of us, and everything will work out. So right now, we're living at the Hampton Inn, so as we get clean sheets and fresh towels every morning, and lots, and we're anxious to move into our house. We bought a house, Ross is the first in this house, in the south part of Lincoln County. Looking forward to the human involvement community. Really excited about the hospital and the physicians that we have there, and I was telling the editor about all the physicians that the hospital staff that I've met, and I know them to talk to. We've got a great vision to be in. group of individuals in the healthcare field here. And what is really, thank you, back, and what I'm really excited about is the youth that we have here in Lincoln County, but the youth of the boards that work there, and then we have a tenured employees there, but to see the young Russian students, the young marine logic technologists, rest in peace there, that's, that's what's going to make our hospital very, very successful, is people to continue to work there. And there's a sense of pride there at the hospital, which is, which is amazing, it's a good feeling to walk around the hospital, and I'm very, very fortunate. And I appreciate it, and the board trustees of the hospital selecting me for this position. And I look forward to working with U.S. Commission on anything that arises in the healthcare area, to keep them informed as best as I can. If you have any questions or comments, you know, I know the board will be, will need that much, and I know the board will bring any concerns that they have, but, you know, feel free to reach out to me also if you, if you feel, you need to do that, and I'll be willing to talk to you over the phone or reach out to someone. So with that, I think that's kind of a brief introduction of myself, my family, and, you know, I'm just excited about it.
Any questions, Mr. Blaylock? Commissioners that are on the hospital board, y'all raise your hands. I've been there, I know it's a tough job, and I think y'all done a good job on your selection of our leader, and I appreciate the job y'all do all the time, but Darrell, we're looking forward to your service, and I appreciate what these commissioners and the other board members that are there and your staff are doing. It's a, it's a wonderful facility, we've been through some tough times, but we're going to get over that, and we look forward to your leadership in there. Thank you, Darrell. Our next item. Commissioner, Attorney Sims, it's consideration for approval of the land swap between the county board of education and the city board of education. County's given up all interest in Stonebridge Academy for one-half interest in Lincoln Central Academy, the old ninth grade academy. It's going to be subject to the Tennessee General Assembly approving a modified private act.
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, this has to do with the old central high school on Main Street, the old ninth grade academy, and I believe that's where two of the things located this time. And here's the huge address on this, coming way back to the tweens in researching how this all kind of works. And tonight, I'm not going to talk to you very much about a land swap, I think we might be a few steps ahead of ourselves, and I've discussed some preliminaries we need to knock out first, so I'm not putting you into the land swap yet, that's something that we need to talk about later. Let's talk about what we need to do right now. To give you the history on this, right now, the mayor and Alden, at the time it's town fair, now it's city fair, handling each, I had interest in the plant down the road, the school plant, completing the school bus garage, this is a fifty-fifty deal. This was all set up by the, by Tennessee infrastructure. We acquired the property of the county, the senior acquired the property of six deans back in January and February of nineteen twenty-eight. And all of these deans have this clause or something like this clause, I don't understand what you mean by the clause says, you look them up and read it, you'll like it. It says something like this, this advance being executed to Lincoln County and to the mayor and Alden, Alden of Town Fair, for the purpose of providing in part a lot for the high school building, all lives to be built, erected and built, that the people enjoying stance of Lincoln County and the mayor and Alden of Town Fair will consider, under the by virtue of provisions, chapter seven of seven of private acts of general assembly of the state of Tennessee of nineteen twenty-seven. And titles and permissions hereby conveyed as vested in said Lincoln County, as said mayor and Alden of Town Fair, in the way and manners provided for under the terms and provisions of said act, to which references here are pointed to. So they may have to turn up to the act, and it was, the dickens trying to get a copy of that act, and we got it. And in section allowing, chapter seven of seven of this private act, it says this, be it further enacted, if at any time the property to be acquired and paid for under the provisions of this act, being for two years or more, abandoned, or no longer used for county high school purposes, for the purpose of providing a central high school in Town Fair, as contemplated under the provisions of this act, that property you have provided for shall be sold, and the proceeds arising from the sale of such property shall be divided, one act to Lincoln County, and the other act to the mayor and Alden of Town Fair. And the title of the property to be acquired under the provisions of this act should be vested accordingly. So we're still burdened by that clause, it's not used as a central high school, which has been there for years. The act is supposed to sell, okay? So we got, of course, we got to get around that. The school board has been over that property and beholden to the act ever since nineteen twenty-eight. But as we all know, it's not utilized as a central high school. Board of Education has other, other things to do with that property, and I think they'll do that wisely. So basically, the Tennessee, we have to go back to Tennessee General Assembly to get this either modified or seen. And exactly how they do that, we got to leave it up to them. The, I prepared this little resolution that I'd like to read, and maybe you'll have it if you so desire, but the resolution reads like this. Be resolved that the Lincoln County Legislative Board, plus the Tennessee General Assembly, that said prior to act, you're medium or abolish releasing this real property from the burden of all streets or requiring sale of this real property, if it's not being utilized for county high school purposes. This floor resolved that compuse this resolution before into the mayor and Alden of City Fair for that consideration. The floor resolved upon approval of the mayor and Alden of similar resolution of ordinance, the previous resolutions, ordinances before into legislators, legislators representing Lincoln County, City and City Fair, and the General, County General Assembly, to present two of the Tennessee General Assembly for consideration. This floor resolved upon the approval of such amendment, or the option to set prior act by the Tennessee General Assembly, releasing this real property from the burden of the street or requiring sale of property, if it's not being utilized for county high school purposes, the interest of Lincoln County in the real, in the real property, as described, be conveyed to the Lincoln County Board of Education without consideration, and board that such real property can be used for such purposes as determined by Lincoln County Legislature. So basically, that continue the county's act, which is kind of unusual for school, we don't, we don't, normally own school property, the board of education owns school property. So in my opinion, we, you know, be a burden by the, by the Tennessee General Assembly, get that provision knocked out, because it causes a tide problem. And that is done, and that is done by the legislature, and leaving that back to board of education, and that didn't deal with it, it was very small, very, very, very good. We've got a very small county, the board of education does. So that's my thoughts on that.
Before I ask for a motion for approval of that resolution, any questions? I would entertain a motion for approval of that. Commissioner Guntenberg makes a motion, Commissioner Dangerfield seconds. Any further discussion or questions? Not all, those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Our next item, consideration for approval to appoint Benton Barnes to the Lincoln County Planning Commission to replace Dan Douthat, who has resigned. This term would expire May of twenty twenty-two. What's the will of the commission on this item?
Make a motion, we approve.
Commissioner Bradford makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Guin. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item, consideration for approval to appoint Paul Braden to the zoning appeals board to replace Dan Douthat. He was an associate member to that board who has resigned. That term would expire January twenty twenty-five. What's the will of the commission on this item?
Move and approve.
Commissioner Oden makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Honor. Any discussion or questions on this item? Seeing none, all, those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Our next item we're moving to, consideration for approval to appoint a District One County Commissioner to fill the vacancy created when Darren Walker passed away. We have two applicants that you've seen bios in your packet, Danny Walker and Jason Parks, and any other nominees that want to be nominated from the floor, as long as we have proof of their willingness to serve. This term would expire with the next general election, which is August sixth, twenty twenty, but I believe the term would go up until September first. Okay. Those two will still need nominations from the floor, and if there are any other nominations, can, any commissioner can make those nominations. Mr. Braden.
Nominate Danny Walker.
Danny Walker has been nominated.
That's right.
Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, it must be nominated from the floor. Do I hear a motion that they be elected by acclamation? Commissioner Bryant makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Sanders. All those in favor of election of Danny Walker to fill his brother's seat from District One, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
No.
Okay, let's electronically vote then, please.
Mr. Sanders.
I get him.
Not he, it's the speaker, I am.
Steve.
Brown.
Who else?
Ashley.
Commissioner Ashley.
Bradford.
Commissioner Bradford.
Spray.
I'm sorry.
Spray.
Commissioner Spray.
Britt.
Commissioner Britt.
Young.
Douglas.
Douglas.
Ogilvy.
Ogilvy. We're going to call out the ones that did do it right next. Everybody, thank y'all, that was good. Madam Clark?
Twenty in favor, twenty ayes.
Twenty ayes.
Two noes.
Okay, all right.
And one ayes.
Okay. Twenty-four election by Danny Walker by acclamation, two against, he is the new District One Commissioner. Next item, Nancy Harris, we have two considerations that are yours.
Do you want to seat him? Do you want to seat him?
You want, do we want to seat him for the two other items left?
Ashley.
Do I do not have, do you have, I don't, I don't have the paperwork either. Okay, all right. Ms. Harris.
First up on the agenda is the private road proposal, zoning resolution for private roads. This is what the board, the planning commission, on day seven, and this will be approved as written on the stand before the chief of the county. Hold the hearing, this call denied. So a few comments, nothing made. Do you want me to read the separate reports? I don't need it. Like, I can give you the quick condensed version as to why it's, okay. Currently, our, our zoning resolution does not allow private roads at all. The only option that it gives people that are, that are somewhat landlocked is it allows for a private easement. And how that works, if you have a parent parcel that the main parcel, it allows one other lot that's been subdivided within that parent parcel, to, to access through the parent parcel, but it's limited to one. The nine-one-one board has that same condition, and that's why we're not altering the easement portion of our zoning resolution, because I cannot amend the nine-one-one's policy. So the, the way to allow relief for people that have robberies that are landlocked is to come up with what we have, private roads, to allow access to, to lands that people have had for generations or just purchased, but either way, I can't issue a development permit because there is no legal access. So this is the best attempt that we've come up with, we looked at what happened in the past with private roads, the problems that have come off of private roads, and hopefully this is addressed all of it, that's what the criteria, the rulemaking criteria that we must have been for. Will it change in the future? Absolutely, as we run across things that we, we didn't contemplate, we'll, we'll readdress it and make the changes as needed, but for now, this is the best solution. We've kind of bounced this around for, well, three years now, so it's for you to, to consider. We do have a person here in the audience that would like to speak for just a few minutes, I know that's him, he and his family first room, and if he were here for the public hearing, he'd address some of his concerns, but if it's permissible for him to speak.
If, if, if the commissioner requests it.
No, good, pray.
Commissioner Ogilvy will request that.
Thank you, Commissioner Mayor. So I'm here, I'm going to have to, myself and my wife Ashley, I'm Evan Dawson, and we have a piece of land on Bellsville Road, and it was, we got it from Latin Lawson, and we've been staying with them for a while now, we didn't know about the E-nine-one issue, and now we're, we're on two, to hopefully get this amended or, you know, special something, I'm not really sure of the terminology, so that we can build our home. The property that we're on is owned by, it's twenty-six acres owned by her father, my father-in-law, and we purchased the front parcel of it, and it's five acres, and we just need our driveway basically off of the main road. Because of this rule, we have to do it as a private road now, which we're including what we need to do, and here's all of the, whatever we need to do to actually get that road built, in the manner that we need to build it so that service vehicles, emergency vehicles can get to the house, all the things that are in the criteria that have been changed and altered, and we're all for it. Like I said, I'm living with land laws, so.
Okay.
Any questions? Comments?
No questions, what's the will of the commission?
So move.
Commissioner Douglas makes a motion, Commissioner Taylor seconded. Any questions or comments before we vote? All those in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously pass. Next item, Ms. Harris.
Second is a proposal for fences and walls. This came before you all, and was returned to the planning commission, requesting removal of some language and keeping only the requirement that fences and walls be erected on property lines, but in no case shall be located any closer than twelve feet from the edge of any traveled roadway or to the limit of the right way as stated on the county road list. Also, we put a mere reflection of the existing non-conformant fence fences.
Commissioner Douglas makes a motion, Commissioner Taylor seconded. Any questions or comments before we vote? All is in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Anatomously pass. Next item, Ms. Harris.
Second is a proposal for fences and walls. This came before y'all came. And it was returned to the county commission uh, to request the removal of some of the language in it. Keeping only the requirement that fences and walls be erected on property lines, but in no case shall be located any closer than 12 feet from the edge of any traveled roadway or to the limit of the right of way as stated on the county road list. Also, we, we put a near question of existing non-conformity fences shall conform with this regulation. In addition, the, the definition of fence and walls. And that, that's pretty much what we did, we stripped out everything else and got what you wanted. And because of the requirement of where I came here before, any changes had to go back to the county commission, readdressed, uh, recommended back. And we held the public hearing again tonight. There were some comments, uh, there were some numbers that were introduced. And maybe the 12 foot was, was not um, palatable with everybody because the property lines went beyond that. Uh, the 12 foot basically is for the highway department to be able to maintain the roads here in Lincoln County safely. Um, it's not so much for visibility. Uh, it, it is if the, the vegetation there grows greater. But in our, our resolution, we already addressed corner blocks where there's a, a triangular area of 75 feet where if there's any kind of obstruction, that's totally separate from this. That, that's already addressed. This is for Tim to send his crews out and maintain roadways and lay the issue.
Okay. Any questions? Did you want to address, did you want to address the full commission tonight? I need a, I need a commissioner. Commissioner Young says yes. There was one other person, is the other person here that would, okay, if you want to after this, you, you can also.
Uh, my name is Wes, I would like you to play in this place. Without any network here, um. Just quickly, uh, I understand. Mr. Tim's situation, wanting to keep up the roads, um, hell, right there. Not open, it's not that way everywhere. We end up taking care of most things. It's just like when the trees go down, it's too afraid that before the county can get there. It'll be easy, it'll be kind of, climb it up by the time you get there. While I read the top of the resolution, mainly this to me looked like it said it was for um, basically, where people can sit, that's the very first thing I'm going to write in the resolution. And it seemed like trees and bushes and shrubs. Those block a lot more than fence posts or a piece of wire or whatever. And I brought up that very back of where we got these back, we tried to vary this procedure. We leave signs of right of way, fences were pushed out, we were placed small, we leave that going in. But the road in a lot of places, because we live where there's a lot of hills, the road and the side of the roadway where it was just pushed off instead of one-on-one slope. If anyone knows where the one-on-one slope is, you, you can't even walk on it. So, it left you with places where there may be dirt. Where you could either let grow up or you fence right up near the edge of the road. And basically, no different than a hardway would be on the side of your highways. You've got 55 knots now. And so, you dug your holes close to that edge of that one-on-one slope, it's good. It basically is now harder. And for those types of places, um, I don't, I don't think 12 foot is acceptable. I'm sure there are places that, you know, and there's a lot of my parents, I have a lot of road friends, and a lot of my parents 20-foot out there. It's just where it works. It's not because I wanted to get on the roads more. And so, I, I would hope all you could consider that.
Okay. Okay, do you, do we have a motion that, did you want to speak? Yes. Mr. Douglas. Tim, if you will, after he finishes, if you will, address, address the problem, please.
Thanks for letting me speak. Uh, my name is Steve Walker, and I live in Exeter State, standing in the southern part of the county. And uh, I do agree with Memphis for this type of fence, I say, or this type of laws hanging around Lincoln County. But 12 foot is excessive. Memphis is a natural, both have 10-foot laws. And I don't think Allen County that we need one in excess of that. But uh, my neighborhood, the lots are 100 by 300. Now, some of these houses, the road is on the long side of the lot. That means that fellow loses more than uh, 10% of his whole lot that he can't fence in use. When you got 100 by 300 block, you don't have a whole lot to fence. And of course, that means a lot of drought land also. But I think eight foot would be much more reasonable. And when I had my utility scan, uh, they only go into my yard about eight foot. That's plenty around the pool. If you hit the law for crewmen who are, some ditches are wider than that, but some turn you go right through your property too. So, ditches are discounted a lot, but thank you.
Okay. To him.
Uh, I spoke earlier. I gave several reasons we're having this issue with things that get around roads. A lot of safety issues. I get a lot of help from the public. People start putting up fences right next to roads. While they're putting so close to road, there's no regulations in place right now for fences on roads. We did not purchase our right of way, but our right of way was given. And therefore, there's no right of ways restrictions in place. A lot of people put these fences up, so I'm gonna keep it clean, I'm gonna keep it, you know, uh, sprayed, no trees in. That works good till somebody buys it or some, I live with somebody else. And then trucks start growing up. Next thing, now you got tree control out in the road. So, it just keeps getting there and there. And we can't maintain ditches. We don't have ditches, we don't have a threat. That's all purpose, we want to do this.
And you might mention about existing fences, it doesn't.
No, it is not covered with existing fences. It's all new construction. It's not repaired, fixed, it's just new construction.
Any question, Tim?
Okay, the boys set back, you know, they don't want cars tearing into the dirt. I understand some places there's a lot of plastic, but we guys are some more. Put something out there. This is, this is not working the way that it is.
Any question, Tim? Excuse me.
It's also where repair of the existing plants, it doesn't apply to the repair of the present plants.
That's right.
Just new constructs.
Commissioner Oben?
Tim, what happens if you get in a situation like Mr. Beverly's in? Where you can't move 12 foot back off the road?
Well, I think there's happy beans in there. I mean, I, I think we work with people on that. But when you got asphalt, the hose right side of asphalt, that's not, I do, I do think so.
Well, I understand, but I certainly understand his situation too. And if we've got a regulation that says it's gotta be 12 foot off, then how do you work with it? I don't understand that.
Well, there's exemptions to all offices. I think you can get exemptions, special exemptions in there. Variants are.
Okay.
But almost right, Wes has got a special, like, he's going out, big hill, big roads on both sides of the road. And it's not even part of the road, but I take it it's like this. There's what we have to do. They build right at the bottom of the pile, right down. All the water comes right through the road, right down the side of it.
Well, I guess my next question is, how many variances have you issued since you've been there, Miss Nancy, on anything?
Well, there's not been anything that regulated.
I'm not talking about just on fences, I'm talking about variances on any. Sarah?
Paul Jean is our chairman.
Would you, Nancy, would you describe, just say Wes wanted to build his fence and he asked for a variance? What would be the procedure to give him a variance?
Anytime there's um, a situation that somebody cannot conform to regulations or written, um, there's, there's usually always an out for special exceptions and variances. In Wes's case, it would be a variance in where he, because of topography, he cannot meet the intent of what that regulation says. So, um, the, the steps are, I deny it, then it goes to the board of zoning appeals. Paul Jean is our chairman. Um, they hear the case and they weigh it on a criteria basis. And if it meets, checks all those boxes on the criteria, um, then he is granted the variance. And basically, what it is, is topography. Or something is restricting him and he cannot maintain that 12 foot. Knowing his case, he would qualify. The situation might have to qualify.
But he would automatically be denied on the front end.
It would have to be, that's how the.
That's how the process works.
Okay. Any questions? If anybody that's talked or discussed amongst commissioners? If not, I would entertain a motion. Commission to approve by Commissioner Ewen, seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Any further discussion? I would ask you to electronic vote on this one, please.
I have to cancel the whole vote to do that.
What?
I have to cancel everybody to do this.
I'll cancel.
Okay, hold on. John Ford.
Oh.
Ms. Kate. Confirm, and Danzerberg, confirm.
Got a little bit. He's not out.
Paul and you would still make it? Confirm. Have you, did you vote yes or no yet? Okay, Ms. Kate says confirm. John, yours is still no. Okay.
Now get everybody. Okay?
Sixteen ayes, five noes. One ayes.
Okay.
And one extension.
It's approved. Next item, Chamber of Commerce report, Ms. Carolyn Ditten.
Hey, thank you everyone for allowing me to be here tonight. And it's nice to see you all in person. Uh, we were really pleased tonight that Jason Meeks and Sheldon Hyatt could be here as the recipients for the Governor's Launching Star Awards, winning the adult and youth awards. Uh, the chamber is the county coordinator for this program. And I'd like to suggest that as you see people that are doing extraordinary acts of volunteerism in our community during this time, that if you would like to not ask someone from the 2020 Awards, to please call the chamber. We would be glad to hear the information if that. Uh, giving you all a copy of our latest um, Chamber Community Guide. Uh, the cover is featuring the Joy Glen River Nature Reserve at Russell Park. Uh, we thank our partners, the Exchange, for helping us with this project over the year. And the extra copies are available at the chamber or through our participating ad sponsors. During Governor Lee's stay in home orders, we have continued to do work with the chamber. He and I members connected and a lot of the mail and information on various grants and links that they for help with for small businesses. We have helped with Canadian media. We have developed the FLC Chamber Chat. These are Zoom meetings that give our members an opportunity to stay connected as well and tell each other about their businesses and different services that they have um, started during this time. We've also had representatives from Small Business Development Center, NTU, NTSU to do this. Um, our student advisory board, we were unable to have a proper graduation for them. But we do have our sponsor planer who is Harold Canada. So, we're very proud of Harold for all of his volunteer work during this whole year. And also, the students raised $300 to benefit the Junior's House, where we've been involved. Uh, we're looking for an alternative way that we can provide information for our adult info scam seminar that would have been held on April 1st that would have been canceled. This, of course, is our scam seminar for senior adults. Um, our partners, Better Reasons Bureau and US Bank have a lot of valuable information that we want to still provide to our seniors. Um, and some timely information about scams that are related to COVID-19 that uh, we would like to give that information out. So, we're looking at a way that we might be able to do that through video. Our T- T- O- Department's alternate has been rescheduled and moved to October the 3rd. Uh, just another day on Mr. Christmas Pass. The Oversight Committee is, of course, watching the guidance from the CDC and the ERG. And of course, um, our lower government to uh, we hope that we'll be able to continue to have the festival in some way. Uh, at this point, we may not know how that will be. But uh, we, we understand how important this is to our nonprofits as well as our adult businesses um, during the Christmas season. So, we're, we're making every effort to have a festival in some way. Uh, vendor forums and event forums will be on our website, mrchristmaspass.com and in this week. And also, um, at the chamber, we have Tennessee pledge posters, stickers, and decals for any of our instances to post that have made the Tennessee pledge to keep their employees and as well as their customers safe by um, pledging to um, go through all proper procedures during COVID-19.
Thank you. Any, any questions or comment for Ms. Carolyn? Thank you. I believe we're ready for our budget committee. I'm ready for you.
Budget committee meeting report for the June 16th, 2020, for the session of the board of commissioners. Budget Committee Vice Chairman Bryant conducted a public hearing on the fiscal year of 2020, 2021. Lincoln County proposed budget on June 2nd, 23 at 6:00 p.m. in the Lincoln Central Academy Auditorium. Detailed instructions for participation in the public hearing were published in the Health Valley Times. After closure of the public hearing, the Budget Committee, the county legislative body of Lincoln County, Tennessee, met for a sit to do notice in the auditorium of Lincoln Central Academy on June 2nd, 2020 at 6:00 p.m. On March 20th, 2021, Governor Bill Lee signed Executive Order Number 16, which suspends the requirements of the Tennessee Open Meeting Act to the extent necessary to allow for business to be conducted by electronic means if deemed necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans and life of the COVID-19 pandemic. The Health Valley Times published in August stated that public access to the meeting will be limited, but that the meeting will be either videoed or audio recorded. And the recording of this meeting can be found on the county's website. Mayor Newman took the roll call of members present. The result of this roll call was lovely. Members present were Sherwood Andrewfield, Randy Davis, Kate Ewen, Ricky Bryant, Randy Bradford, and Donnie Ogden. Members absent were Steve Graham and Doug Cunningham. Others present were County Mayor Bill Newman, Finance Director Cole Bradford, County Attorney Ed Sims, County Information Technology IT Director Matt Coffey, Highway Superintendent Tim Gill, Chris Ewen. Tim Gill, Chris Ewen, with the Health Valley Times. Motion by the Mr. Bradford, seconded by the Mr. Dangerfield, passed with a roll call vote of six yes, two absent, to conduct this meeting in accordance with the Executive Order Number 16. Item one, County Mayor Newman provided the following information items. USDA lease proposals update, lease proposals update. Mr. Mayor, item.
That's an information item. It's attached here. Our current lease with them goes through December, so that's in place. And as things happen, I think they will probably renew the lease, but we'll just have to see. But right now, they are not taking applications for building a new building.
B, Lincoln County Board of Education voted to proceed with the swapping, the swapping the city of Fable's one high interest in the Lincoln Central Academy, the Lincoln County Board of Education's holding interest in the Stone Bridge Academy's property. The commission would also have to approve this swap. All approvals will be subject to the State Journal of Standards Amendment or pending a 1927 Private Act. This item will be on the commission's agenda for the June meeting. Item two and item three. Fiscal year 2021, Lincoln Health Systems budget is attached, and the 2021 Lincoln County Board of Public Utilities budget, 3A Water, 3B Waste Water, is attached. We had a motion by the Mr. Bradford, seconded by the Mr. Davis, passed with a roll call vote of six yes, two absent, to recommend approval of the attached fiscal year 2021 Lincoln Health System budget and the attached fiscal year 2021 Lincoln County Board of Public Utilities budget as presented.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Make a motion to be approved.
Mr. Bradford makes a motion, seconded by Mr. Dangerfield. Any discussion or questions on approval of the Health System budget and the Public Utilities budget? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogleson?
Item four. Highway and Civil Lieutenant Gill and Finance Director Bradford provided the attached Highway Department Building Program Update and requested nine item changes to the draft budget. We had a motion by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Mr. Ewen, passed with a roll call vote of six yes, two absent, to approve incorporating the requested changes to the fiscal year 2021 Highway Fund Budget Amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
No motion.
Mr. Gill makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Any questions on this item? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogleson?
Item five. Finance Director Bradford presented the following items. A, the Highway Department wrecked a 2006 Ford L450 service truck. The department purchased a 2014 Dodge Service Utility Truck as a replacement from J.M. Wood Auction Company in the amount of $50,940. This was an information item. B, 101 General Fund Budget Amendments are attached. C, 116 Solid Waste Fund Budget Amendments are attached. D, 141 General Purge School Fund Budget Amendments are attached. E, 143 Centralized Cafeteria Fund Budget Amendments are attached. And F, Form CT-0253, that school, prom book, knowledge receipt of form, commission approved at the May meeting, is attached. G, Form CT-0253, school, thank pass, acknowledged receipt of form, commission approved at the May meeting. Financials are attached, the Sheriff's Department's LP, Maylin Solution Customers Agreement. We had a motion by the Mr. Ogilvy, seconded by the Mr. Bradford, and passed with a roll call vote of six yes, two absent, to recommend approval of Items 5A through Items 5H above.
Cole, should that be aye? Should item aye, okay. And then if y'all change that, it's a mint print here. It's item 5A through item 5I. And I would entertain a motion for that approval, please. Commissioner Young makes a motion. Commissioner Sprague seconds. Any questions on any of those items? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously passed. Commissioner Ogleson?
Fiscal 2021 final budget provision. A, appropriations resolution. We had a motion by the Mr. Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Davis, and passed with a roll call vote of six yes, two absent, to recommend approval of the attached resolution making appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Lincoln County, Tennessee for the year beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2020.
Okay, we will be taking these separately and electronically voting on those. Do I have a motion for the appropriation, appropriation resolution be approved? Commissioner Cunningham makes the motion. Commissioner Douglas seconds. Any questions on appropriations? Please electronic vote at this time, please.
Mr. Brown. Mr. Sanders. Mr. Brown. Ashley. Ewen. Mitchell. Or is it not Ewen? Bradford. Hunter. Spray. Taylor. Young. Cunningham. Commissioner Ogilvy. Holland, absent.
Did I get everybody? Thank God. Okay.
Twenty-two ayes, one absent.
Okay.
Mayor, I think it might be an over if you announce how everyone votes.
Will you just read it?
Okay. Yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Brown, yes. Mr. Sanders, yes. Brown, yes. Davis, yes. Thor, yes. Ashley, yes. Ewen, yes. Mitchell, yes. Bradford, yes. Hunter, yes. Spray, yes. Dangerfield, yes. Britt, yes. Taylor, yes. Young, yes. Cunningham, yes. Martinez, yes. Bryant, yes. Guntherberg, yes. Douglas, yes. Jean, yes. Ogilvy, yes. Commissioner Holland is absent.
Okay. Twenty-two yes, one seat vacant, and one absent. Appropriations resolution passes. Commissioner Ogleson?
B, Tax Laidり Resolution. Had a motion by Commissioner Ogilvy, seconded by Commissioner Ewen, and passed with a roll call vote of six yes, two absent, to recommend approval of the attached resolution fixing the tax lady in Lincoln County, Tennessee for the year beginning July 1, 2020.
What's the will of the commission? Commissioner Broad makes a motion to pass, seconded by Commissioner Bradford. Any questions? That tax rate is $2.102, the same as last year, correct? Any questions? Please electronic vote.
Commissioner Britt. Twenty-two ayes, one absent.
Okay, will you read the vote, please?
Brown, yes. Sanders, yes. Brown, yes. Davis, yes. Thor, yes. Ashley, yes. Ewen, yes. Mitchell, yes. Bradford, yes. Hunter, yes. Spray, yes. Dangerfield, yes. Britt, yes. Taylor, yes. Young, yes. Cunningham, yes. Martinez, yes. Bryant, yes. Guntherberg, yes. Douglas, yes. Jean, yes. Ogilvy, yes. Holland, absent.
Okay. Twenty-two yes, one absent, one seat vacant. The Tax Laidり Resolution unanimously passes. Commissioner Ogleson?
C, the nonprofit appropriations resolution. Had a motion by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, passed with a roll call vote of six yes, two absent, to recommend approval of the attached resolution making appropriations to nonprofit organizations of Lincoln County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020.
What's the will of the commission? Mr. Douglas makes a motion for approval, seconded by Mr. Taylor. Any questions or comments on the nonprofit appropriation resolution? Please electronic vote. Read them.
Ogilvy, yes. Jean, yes. Douglas, yes. Guntherberg, yes. Bryant, yes. Martinez, yes. Cunningham, yes. Young, yes. Taylor, yes. Britt, yes. Dangerfield, yes. Spray, yes. Hunter, yes. Bradford, yes. Mitchell, yes. Ewen, yes. Ashley, yes. Thor, yes. Davis, yes. Brown, yes. Sanders, yes. Brown, yes. Holland, absent. One vacant.
Okay. Twenty-two yes, one absent, one seat vacant. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogleson?
Item seven. Now, given enough other opinions, we presented that motion by Mr. Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Davis, and passed to adjourn with a roll call vote, respectfully submitted to the June 2020 Reversion of the County Legislative Body, Steve Graham, Chairman, Attorney, Detective Secretary, Cole Bradford, and Court Secretary. That's all we got.
Okay. Cole Bradford, come up here. We got a few questions for you. You did a good job. I just want to, I think everybody appreciates what you and your department has done and coordinated with all the offices in some circumstances that we had to live under. It wasn't ideal, and I know, I appreciate it, and I think this commission does too for the job you've led, your group, doing so. Thank you very much. Next item, Notary Republicans.
Claudia Gibson, by Commissioner Ogilvy. Jason Hamer, by Commissioner Spray. Katie E. Gatlin and Tabby R. Graham, by Commissioner Cunningham. Tammy Hall Allen, by Commissioner Mitchell. Randall Slaton and Linda C. Dunn, by Commissioner Holland. Judy B. Clevenger, by Commissioner Bradford. Heather Baldwin, by Commissioner Thor. Michelle Allen, by Commissioner Sanders. Marty B. Sis, by Commissioner Cunningham.
Any additions? Do I hear a motion approval of that list then? Commissioner Guttenberg makes a motion. Mr. Young seconds. Any comments or questions? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Now declare the meeting open for any new business, and before Doug says, let's go home, we could have a virtual meeting on June 30th in case we had some last minute amendments to the budget. Anything to add to that? It would be virtual, but you know, sometimes we have some of those, we have to change around for some unexpected expenses or whatever, so that's about the only thing that I know. Anybody else with announcements? Is there any new business? Commissioner Young?
I have a question.
Okay.
How do we go about getting in the system for the commission?
Last time, your father paid for it, so he probably would let you pay for it this time.
What's wrong with it?
The TV, I have my remote for the TV. As I called Lisa, she said it should be here. It's not. So that's the problem tonight, because I don't know what it was. If the box is here, I don't know why. I didn't read, wasn't reading, but the last two votes, three votes were fine, but I don't, I can't answer that. What is the process of replacing this?
Money. I mean, I really don't, I don't think we've had anyone check it really, have we?
When I sent yours back, when I sent yours back, he told me there were no more updates for the system. It is as it is, so unless there's a.
The last time, TV wouldn't work.
Okay. Matt, will you just check into it for us, far as?
I thought it turned on.
Far as if there are things we need to be doing to it, if not, what a new system would look like and cost on that, please?
Will do.
Thank you. Anything else on our new business? Doug?
I'm gonna wait, gentlemen.
All those in favor of German, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?